Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Leavenworth-Lansing Chamber of Commerce's candidate forums for Lansing City Council and then later this evening for the School Board, USD 469 School Board. Today, as you can see, we'll have five candidates. They'll introduce themselves, they'll take your questions, and hopefully we'll have a lively discussion on their issues. As we get started, first of all, let me express our appreciation to Lansing School District and the middle school for allowing us to be here. And I also want to express appreciation to the video production support by Eric Price, the owner of Rogue Creative. We're very fortunate at the Chamber to have him support us. I also want to thank my committee, Kelly Butler and Jeanette Labey, great amount of support in putting this together. My name is Ted Davis, and I have the honor of being the chairman of the Governmental Affairs Committee for the Chamber of Commerce. And on behalf of Jen Anders, our president, I'd like to welcome you to this evening's event. Our format, I'm going to give each of the candidates two minutes to introduce themselves. When they're finished, then we're going to take questions directly from you. What I would ask to do is that whether you ask verbally tonight, or we don't get to your question, if you please write them on three-by-five cards, we have cards and pens available. That way, we can collect the cards, collect the questions, those that are, we don't have time to ask today. I'm going to send those to the candidates, gather their responses, and then we'll post those on the Chamber's website. So I think we're about ready to go. Candidates, you all set? Oh, one last thing, let me make sure, our timekeeper down here in front, if you can't see it, she's got a one-minute sign, 30 seconds, which is yellow, red, which means stop. So with that, sir, introduce yourself, and you've got two minutes.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm excited to be here. I am Marcus Major. I am the Lansing City Council member right now, current, Ward Two, and unfortunately, I'm running unopposed for this round. I can tell you that it's exciting to continue serving the city of Lansing. I've been a Lansing City community member since 2001. I've began serving the Lansing City from parks and recs to raising my boys in the sports and adventures, to coaching, to assisting with coaching, to serving with high school and fundraisers and those kinds of events. Serving on the Lansing City Council and the great things that we've accomplished, you all read our Lansing Journal, you look at our Facebook, and just to name a few things that we're excited, that we've accomplished, is we do have a beautiful Bernard Park with all the softball fields and baseball fields and those kinds of things. We have a pool that's coming in, we're working really, really hard with that. You're watching the news with the town center and the improvements of that coming in and where we're bringing infrastructure in that. And you've seen all the road network changes and improvements that we've made, from intersections to road networks to bringing in more commercial structure. So those are kind of my goals, to continue strong supporting my fellow city councilmen, as well as our city administrator led by Tim Vandal and our city of Lansing led by our mayor, Tony McNeil. And I'd be happy to take any questions you may have at this time.
Introduction first.
Oh, is it? Okay. Good evening. My name is Jesse Garvey. I am the current representative for Ward Three. I've served on the council for 10 years now. I was born in Leavenworth, Kansas in 1967, married my beautiful high school sweetheart, Brenda Garvey, in 1988. We had two great kids, Sarah Garvey and Greg Garvey, and when they started attending school age, we decided it was time to move to Lansing to get them into Lansing School District. So we moved to Lansing in 2000, in hopes that our kids would attend school here, and they went their entire school year in Lansing. Sarah has given us two grandchildren, Jamison, who is three, Nadia is almost one, Greg has given us one grandchild, Jeremiah is two, just turned two. Being a grandparent is the best thing I could ever do in my whole life. If I had a choice between serving on the council or being a grandparent, it's grandparent every time, just to say, but priorities first with everything in life, right? Serving with the council was kind of an accident. Billy Blackwell was campaigning through my neighborhood to be mayor, and when he said when he got appointed mayor, or won his election to become mayor, that I could apply for his seat because he vacated. Well, ultimately, he won, he dropped off an application, and I showed up for the interview, and there's five other candidates there, and I'm thinking, man, I thought this was going to be easy, Billy. He said, no, no, you got interviewed for it. And I interviewed, and they appointed me to the position. That was 10 years ago, so. And one thing I can tell you in the past 10 years is one thing that showed me was how blind I was to city government. I've learned so much in 10 years that the things I didn't know back then, that I didn't pay attention to, and now I pay an overabundance of attention to. It's really awesome to be involved. You know, when you're involved in city government, you can improve the community for the residents, it's awesome. I mean, you talk about the pool, you know, we probably could have pushed the pool through, but we gave the vote to the people to decide, and then you guys said yes, which was awesome. And I can't wait to see that pool go in. But I love serving, I'd love to continue to serve. Thank you.
So hi, my name is Brian Covey. I'm running for city council, Ward Three. I'm originally from St. Louis, Missouri, right down the road a little ways, down I-70. 1989, I graduated high school, married my beautiful wife, Amy, and joined the Air Force. Spent 26 years in the Air Force, retired 2016, and me and my family moved here to Lansing, Kansas. Me and Amy have been married 33 years. We have three kids and one grandson. So why did I decide to run for city council? Well, mainly it was a desire to get involved with city government. I really don't have anything bad to say about the current city council. As a matter of fact, getting ready for this run, I went back and looked at, you know, five years' worth of minutes, and yeah, I think overall, the city council's doing a pretty good job. Again, my desire is just to be involved. Anytime an entity can tax me and I can be involved, I would love to be involved. As a matter of fact, I think I actually voted for Mr. Garvey last election, so yeah, you're welcome. The only thing I can sort of promise to potential voters who would be thinking about voting for me is that I am a conservative Republican. I believe in small government, I believe in low taxes. I'm not stupid, I don't believe in no taxes. I know that the city council needs money to run the city of Lansing, and that means there has to be taxes. I believe in the rule of law and that individual rights are paramount. My only promise I can make at this point is, any issue that would come to the city council, if I'm elected, I will look at it through that lens. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming. My name is Greg Beeler. I am running for reelection for Lansing City Council for Ward Four. I first got involved in the Lansing City small-town politics, as Jesse said. In 2009, I worked with Harland Russell, who was running for mayor, and I worked on Harland's mayoral campaign. In 2011, when Harland decided that 16 years on the city council is enough, he asked me if I would be willing to run. My wife and I talked about it, and I ran, and I was elected. So I've been on the city council now for 12 years. My wife and I and our two children moved to Lansing in 2004, when the army stationed me here. Both of my children are Lansing High School graduates. I have a grandson from each of my children. Unfortunately, they are nowhere nearby because my son and daughter-in-law are in Greensboro, North Carolina, with one grandson, and my daughter and her husband are in El Paso, Texas. My daughter's stationed at Fort Bliss, and they have my other grandson. So I do spend a lot of time traveling back and forth on long weekends to go see my grandchildren. Why should you vote for me? Why should you reelect me? We have a long history and a positive record of positive things that we've done here in the city since I've been on the council. I was involved with getting the dog law changed. We had a dog ordinance that was breed-specific. I worked with the Leavenworth-Lansing animal control people, and we got that changed. We've done a lot of great things. We brought businesses in, we've lowered our mill levy the last three years in a row, and we're saving everybody money. So thank you very much, and I look forward to your questions.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Peter Robinson, and I'm excited to be your next city council member. I am married to Barb Robinson. She's a teacher here in Lansing at the elementary school. We both have lived here since 2003. We have three children, two of them graduated from Lansing. I have a lot of experience working in government. As an airman in the Air Force, I was the mayor for Royal Oaks Town Council. Before that, I was on the council, I was a council member there, so I understand the responsibilities of being a city council member. And just to bring that up, the city council needs to provide leadership and guidance to the community, and to do that, they need to get the community's involvement. The community needs to be just as excited as the board members that are up here today. And I think one of my jobs is to make sure that I get you involved in that process. Two minutes sure isn't a lot of time. I want to consider the needs of the community, but I want to gather that information from you, and then I want to apply it to what we do every day here in Lansing. That requires teamwork, and I believe one of my best attributes is to be a leader. I'm currently a school board member, and I worked on the school board for the last four years, and I was the president of the school board for a year. I have over 40 years' experience working in the government, 23 with the Air Force, and now I've been working up at Fort Leavenworth for almost 20 years. So that experience will bring, I will bring to Lansing, hopefully to the city council. Also, that's my time. Well, thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. We have one candidate who could not make it, and I'm going to read a statement from Gene Kirby. Said, "I would like to thank the Chamber for hosting this event. However, I am in the healing process from a surgical procedure from last week, and I have more recovery time before appearing at events. Perhaps the biggest issue facing everyone today is property taxes. It doesn't matter whether you rent, or are buying a home, or own your home. Property taxes affect all of us. The one issue that we can control is the mill levy. The mill levy in 2016 was 41.838, and today stands at 32.920. Total reduction in that timeframe of 8.918. Affordable housing is an issue that we continue to deal with. One's definition of affordable doesn't always align with that of someone else. There are some good news to report. Fairlane townhouses have just recently opened and working on plans for expansion. These are not Section 8 townhouses. They are locally owned and operated. Plans are being made for an additional 50 townhomes adjacent to Covington Woods. Preliminary plans there call for additional 50 units. Let's be clear about this issue: they are not Section 8 townhouses. There will be income guidelines in order for the developer to get tax credits. The state allows for these tax credits in order to encourage developers to build affordable units. Again, privately owned and operated. The city has always been open to assisting developers, whether it's a resident or commercial. Inflation and interest rates being what they are, and an issue that is causing delays across the board. We strive to be good neighbors with all concerned. Many of you may not be aware of, but the city transferred in excess of $400,000 to the school district for the funds that are distributed." I'm going to take it a little bit longer since he's not here to answer questions. "I, along with the council and city staff, recognize the importance of working to make Lansing a great place to live and raise families. I understand that sometimes difficult times that we are all faced during these sometimes trying periods. I get it that there are people living on fixed incomes, and being one of those people. As a council member, difficult decisions must be made. As a council member, we have to look at today and down the road. Sometimes these decisions aren't easy, popular, and sometimes even understood. As a council member, I have to take a look at how the decisions that we make, not only from today, but long-term down the road. Progress has been slow at times, but progress has been made." That's from Gene Kirby, and again, he was not able to join us. We're going to go into Q and A, so I ask that you ask your questions, please get to the question. Please only take a sentence or two to introduce the topic, but please quickly get to the question. If you take long, I will interrupt you and ask you to get to the question, because we're trying to hear from the candidates. The candidates will have two minutes to answer, and also, I forgot to mention earlier, gentlemen, when we finish the Q and A, you'll have one minute to make a closing statement when we're finished. All right. With that, if you haven't already, if you want to ask questions, again, if you write those down, we'll collect them at the end to make sure that we get answers to all the questions if we can't get to them this evening. So who has our first question? Yes, sir?
Dave Bonner. The commercial development is one of the things that's greatly lacking in our county right now. We've made small progress with the commercial ground that's available. However, the issue is for bringing in businesses and organizations that aren't going to pay a large amount of taxes to help us balance out the residential property tax versus what we should be bringing in in commercial tax. What is the city doing wrong, in your opinion, right now? What would you do differently to increase economic development in Lansing to benefit the community and the city?
Okay, can we start?
Sir, thank you for that question. One of the things that we need to do is to provide a better way for people to get to Lansing. If you're coming in from the airport right now, it's difficult, it's a 45-minute drive. If we could have a route that was more direct, and I know that the city council has actually talked about having a byway or some other road built, but it just hasn't happened. And you're right, we need to increase the businesses, but to do that, we need to make sure that we have the proper method to get them here to Lansing. We need to develop the roads, the grounds, and the infrastructure for them.
Well, I'm going to give you a different answer, because I'm going to kind of disagree. I think we're moving in the right way.
Okay, go ahead. Please, go ahead, continue.
So, thank you. Yes, Lansing does need to get better access to the interstate. Unfortunately, that is an extremely expensive, extremely expensive project. We have been very successful in bringing businesses in. We had Kansas City, Kansas Community College just purchased land, and they're supposed to be up and operational, I think, by 2027. That will bring students. Students have to eat, students like to buy things, students like places to stay. So that should, hopefully, inspire some more growth. Since I've been on the council, we've brought in Harbor Freight, we've brought in QuickTrip, we've brought in Club Car Wash, we've brought in the new oil facility, we've brought in a dentist office, we've brought in an eye care facility. We've done a whole lot as a city to bring in more businesses, because we do realize that there are 2,000 rooftops that are paying a significant amount of the taxes. We are working with a developer who has some options of businesses that may be coming in. Unfortunately, the mayor and the city administrator are very closed-lipped on that stuff, so we really don't know what it is, but we do know that they're talking with other organizations to bring businesses in, to provide services to the city, to help ease the tax burden on the residents, and to build the taxes for the city to do different things. Thank you.
So, as I've been walking around, talking to Lansing residents, the issue of taxes and how much Lansing wants to expand has been an issue that they've wanted to discuss. And quite honestly, I've had different answers from different people. Some people are like, yep, we need more tax base here in Lansing to take the burden off the homeowner. And then I've had other folks that said, I like Lansing the way it is, kind of smaller town, littler, you know, littler footprint. If I wanted to live in Johnson County, I would move there, is one answer I got. But to answer your question, I think, one thing I think the city council does a little bit of, and that maybe we could do more, is incentivize companies to come to Lansing. If we own the land, maybe we have to give them the land to get them to develop, maybe we have to give them tax breaks, maybe we have to waive fees and different permits that they would normally have to pay for. I think those would be good selling points to bring folks in. And I know the city council does a little bit of that already.
Well, Greg kind of stole my thunder where I was going, but to create commercial property, you need foot traffic. And with foot traffic, I'm talking about Kansas City, Kansas Community College. So Lansing Town Center has sat across this highway, that highway, for 30 years vacant. They moved people out, said we're going to develop it, and it's sat there, and sat there, and sat there. And we let a developer from outside the area say he was going to do something with it, and did not keep promises. Once the city council took it over, property started to move. Kansas City, Kansas wants to come in and bring all these students in, which creates foot traffic. Tractor Supply Company, Don Eisenhower, they said, we don't like this location anymore. They were like, hey, don't move out of Lansing, we got a place right over here for you in Lansing Town Center. So they're moving from Eisenhower over to Lansing Town Center, another commercial business. We saved, not do, but we saved that tax revenue to keep it in Lansing. So that's another piece of the puzzle going in Lansing Town Center. With just those few pieces, we're going to move Lansing Town Center in the right direction. And like Greg said, we've included all these new businesses like QuickTrip and Harbor Freight and Take Five Oil Change, and we're definitely moving in the right direction. You know, Leavenworth County Development Corporation is supposed to help us develop commercial properties, and I would encourage them to help us move commercial properties in Lansing, because we actually give them funding to help us do that stuff. And sometimes I get a little aggravated, they don't help us as much as they should. So, and we also work with the Chamber of Commerce, of course, you guys, to do those things. And we also have hired what they call a retail coach, which is a guy who goes out and he looks for businesses and tries to draw them into the Lansing community. And those are things that we're trying to do to raise that commercial tax base, to take the burden off of the homeowner.
Well, I guess I'll close it up. Hey, great question, great question, and it's the number-one goal. Every one of us would tell you, we want to increase commercial structure. And let me tell you something that we didn't highlight, that we're also working very hard on, and that is residential development. We need more neighborhoods, we want more rooftops, we want more families, we want the city of Lansing to grow. Currently, Lansing is a pass-through. By the time they get through doing all their business in Leavenworth, they hit the highway and they move on down. Or they're coming in and they've just recently left their home, and they're hitting in and they're stopping. So we've got some improvements, right? We've got some things coming in, you've heard already, where we brought in businesses over the last four years. We increased the road network between the intersections to handle this business, from DeSoto and Eisenhower to Eisenhower and the main street there at QuickTrip. And the most recent businesses are going, we've got some, what I like to call the mom-and-pop businesses that came in. We've got the barbecue restaurant that's come in, and we're encouraging other small family-owned businesses to come into Lansing to help that structure. But unfortunately, we're fighting with, what's recently occurred in the last four years is COVID, and there's very few places that you can go that you're not finding where help's wanted. So as we're working really, really hard with all these teams that are coming and working with Lansing to bring in infrastructure, to bring in commercial structure, to bring in sit-down family restaurants, I bet I've heard that a dozen times, we all want the same thing, and these people have come and spoke with us. I highly encourage all of you to invite anyone to come to our city council meeting, so you can hear these discussions and these proposals and these presentations during our Lansing City Council meetings, to include our Lansing City work groups. The Lansing City Board and the City Administration for Lansing is working really hard to increase that commercial infrastructure, to include working with home developers, to bring in neighborhoods, because we have the property to do so. Thank you.
Next question, please. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Kristen Luffin. I'd love to ask you something. Could you speak to what could be done to prefer pedestrian access, both to our parks and the libraries, or bicycle access also? Prefer pedestrian access to the library, if we call, throw weight increase?
Did you all hear that?
I think I did. I think what you're asking is, and since the mic is on me, we'll come back this way now, right? Okay. So I think the question you're asking is, how can we improve upon foot traffic as well as bicycle traffic to get to where the library's currently sitting? And then I can't remember the other question that you, oh, to our park, Bernard Park, right? To our new park, right? Okay. So, yeah, we've talked about that a lot. If the price of concrete could go down, right? We could, I mean, a dream of ours, and we've talked about it a lot, is to have those sidewalks from Lansing School, the high school, the new high school, because that's been brought up a lot. How about the sidewalks from Lansing High School up to the intersection there at DeSoto and 4H, and then continue on with the nice sidewalk and the work, the road work that we didn't highlight, that was done there on DeSoto recently, there close to Ida, at the intersection of Ida. We've talked about it a lot. It's not something that we've just put down and not continued to address. It's extremely expensive. But I do know, for safety concerns, we've addressed it, it's not something that's going away, it is something that we would love to try to see some type of improvement. I do know that our police works very hard at trying to maintain awareness of crosswalks to the library, and to the park, because I would like to see a way that people could leave the neighborhoods, leave the schools, ride bikes and walk to our new Bernard Park. I'm not saying that it's not going to happen, but I would love to win the lottery and pay for it myself, because it's extremely expensive. It's probably not the right answer you're hearing, but it is something that we have all talked about, how to increase those sidewalks, and how to ease that access for our community and children to be able to utilize the library. And those of you that aren't tracking the library, there's been huge improvements with Terry in the library. Please go see the library, go see Terry. It's amazing progress that they've done. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a tough subject sometimes, because when you talk about accessibility around the city, you know, you talk about needing sidewalks and trails. Trails is probably one of the toughest topics that I've seen on the council since I've been on there, because everybody wants a trail, but they don't want it in their backyard. They don't want people walking through their backyard, but they want to get to the trail. So that's tough. You know, we have a trail program where we were supposed to put trails all the way around the city, and some of that has come to a halt because people fight back with us on that, because they don't want people walking through their backyard, because they're worried about crime, or the kids running through, or whatever. And as far as getting to things, that's one of the main reasons we looked at the property we did for the pool, because I think the west side of the highway is the most highly-populated part of the city, and that's where a number of the trails are. Angel Falls Trails is adjacent to where we're putting in the pool, so that would create great access. In that same area, Adams Acres is over, everybody's familiar with Adams Acres off of Ida, right? We talked about putting in sidewalks in front of houses over there, and believe it or not, some of the residents were like, no, I don't want a sidewalk. I don't want people walking in front of my house. So again, that's another sore subject. Getting across the highway is even tougher. You're talking about a Kansas State Highway. Anytime we talk about doing anything along Seven, the state of Kansas comes in and goes, no, you're not doing that, no, you're not doing that. So it's tough to work with the state of Kansas, finding access to get across. I'd love to put a tunnel under the highway for kids to ride their bikes through, or a bridge over the highway, that would be awesome. But you know what, dealing with the state of Kansas with some of the things we've dealt with, I would hate to try to get that pushed through. But we will continue to work on, you know, safe crosswalks, streetlights that will have access for kids to push buttons on to stop traffic, to get across, and things like that. like that. But yeah, we continually think about trails, though.
So yeah, that was a good question. You know, safety is always one of the primary responsibilities of city government. And also, why have all these nice facilities like the library and the new park if you're not going to have a safe means for people to get to those facilities and then, you know, enjoy and use them? Like has already been mentioned, there are several options, but all of them sound pretty expensive. The only thing I can say is if I am elected, and if it was fiscally responsible to make improvements to crosswalks, add sidewalks, absolutely, I'd be for that.
Is it on? Okay, it is. Yeah, as everyone has said, the trail system is really important to the city. And we do have a real good trail system. We've tried to expand it, and again, people have said no, because they don't want it in the backyard. But one of the things that we do have is we have a park and rec fund. And the little triangle park on Hitter Green down there, I'm a big advocate of neighborhood parks, and we are slowly fixing up the neighborhood parks, taking out those, those park toys that most of us grew up on, swings and 50-foot tall slides that, that can hurt children. And we're replacing them. And we've started, we replaced the little triangle park on Hitter Green down there, and it's beautiful. And I love it, and I see a lot of kids going down there now. And so that's one of the other things that we're also trying to do, is to take the old parks that we have and turn them into new, modern parks. And while we are getting money from sales taxes to do that, it does take a little bit of time, and it's a long process. Like everybody else said, I would love to be able to put a tunnel underneath K-7, or put something over K-7, but the state of Kansas, because they own all that, they get very picky about that stuff. So, thank you.
When I was on the Parks and Rec Board in Lansing back in the early 2000s, there was a very similar question brought up to the Parks and Rec. Although there's been some work done, I think there's a lot more work to do. As a member of the school board, we recently passed a strategic plan, a five, 10-year strategic plan. And I think this would be a great opportunity for the city council to put together a strategic plan, come up with a vision so that, and get experts involved so that we could address some of the concerns that the other board members have brought up here tonight. I don't think any one of us has the answer. Number one is the funding. As I've gone around on this campaign, one of the issues that has been brought up to me is the taxes, property taxes in specific. And if we went to them right now and said, we want you to approve another bond or additional taxes so that we can build roads, I'm not sure that that would get passed right now. But I think if we get a plan together, we get a strategic plan, we get smart people together, we could definitely work on the problem and make it better than it is today. Great question. Thank you.
Next question. Let me ask, follow-up to the first question about economic development. I took it as economic development. One of the criticisms I've offered, heard about economic development here in Leavenworth is that we're too fragmented. Lansing doesn't cooperate with Leavenworth, doesn't cooperate with the county, doesn't cooperate with Tonganaxi and so forth. So in order to bring in kind of the commercial economic development that was talked about, the community, the county, needs to have some collaboration and unity. So my question would be, how willing are you to collaborate with the other municipalities, Leavenworth, Tonganaxi, Baser, Easton, and the county, to be able to come to one voice so that we can have economic development?
I think it's important that we all work together. We all have similar goals. And to achieve those goals, we're probably going to need everybody involved. I mentioned earlier that we needed additional roadways to get us closer to Kansas City, so it doesn't take our taxpayers 45 minutes to get there. And one of the ways we can do that is with working, we talked about money, but if we could get our, the other cities involved, we might be able to split some of that expense. It's important that we work together as a team. We, we have to do that to succeed. I don't think there's any other way to do it. So I think the answer is, we have to. We don't have a choice. We have to work together. We have to put Lansing first. Lansing people are our priority, but we need to work with the other communities.
That is a good question. And I know historically, when I first was elected to the council, that was a big issue. We were very fractured. I think that over the last 12 years, and when the city hired the new city administrator, he is very outgoing, and he meets with the other local mayors and the other city administrators on a regular basis, because we do realize that in order for Leavenworth County to grow, the cities need to work together, along with the county leadership, for a, a common goal. And so we have started doing that, and, and I think we're all very willing to do that. And as Pete mentioned with the, the road, we, we're working together. We want this to happen.
So yeah, I, I, I think it would only make sense that the different municipalities should work together. Number one, you probably could save resources, which equals money, which no one likes paying higher taxes. So anytime you can save money by collaborating with your neighbors, that seems like the, the right thing to do. And like was already said, collaborating with our neighbors, they grow, we grow, we all benefit. So yeah, I'd absolutely be willing to collaborate.
Yeah, that's a good question. Very important that we do support our neighbors. You know, the Leavenworth County is a big county. It goes all the way from Lake Easton down to Baser, but, you know, we're all one big county. And I'll, I'll give you an example of neighborly support. The intersection of Eisenhower and Main Street, you know, that was a collaboration between Leavenworth, Lansing, and the state of Kansas. And it was split three ways, and we all worked awesome together. There was no backbiting and fighting about who's paying for what. We worked extremely well together and got that project done, because we are cordial to each other, and we appreciate each other as neighbors. You know, there's been talk of the, the highway that would leave Lansing by the cemetery over here and fly over to 152. And that's probably a pipe dream, but we'll talk about it. But, you know, they say, what's the benefit of that highway to Leavenworth? Well, it is a benefit, because Leavenworth has an industrial park right here on Eisenhower, which that highway would lead right to. So, you see, we're thinking about that in the long run. Yeah, the road leads to Leavenworth, but it also benefits, I mean, leads to Lansing, but it also benefits Leavenworth. So we think about each other, you know, because whatever is good for Leavenworth is good for Lansing. I mean, do you, do you think Johnson County got where it is today by thinking, oh, Lenexa doesn't want to help Olin Park out? No, they help each other out for a reason down there, and that's why they're the biggest county in the state of Kansas.
Well, it's hard, it's hard to top everything that's already been said. So let me just say, our city administrator, Tim Vandal, and the Leavenworth city administrator have a fantastic relationship. So that's an excellent question, I appreciate that. But over the years, those relationships, these are our neighbors, these are our friends, these are our people we go to church with, these are people that we work with. Leavenworth loves Lansing, Lansing loves Leavenworth, and we're all, we're all one big family. As far as growth goes, they're all excited. You're absolutely right, Jesse. There's been so much work between bridges improvements, to road improvements, to intersections, to paving of the road network in Eisenhower, and that expansion of what they're going to share and what we're going to share. There's a lot of growth and a lot of opportunity that Lansing and Leavenworth work together. And one of my other part-time volunteer is to serve for you all in the community, is I serve on the Leavenworth County Commission Planning and Zoning. So I get to hear and see and work right beside the other townships that belong to Leavenworth County as a whole, working really hard to bring in the commercial structure and the road network and everything. So we're all working together to try to grow. No, the only reason that my good friend Pete M. brought that up is because the mic is in my court, and I get to answer first. So hey, I'm going to save a good one for you when you're up here in just a few minutes, my friend. No, we, we, we do meet, we do have them come to our city council meeting, and they do present our elected officials that are elected. They do present their goals, they do present what they've been able to accomplish, and what's the city and the state's concerns right now as elected officials for us. We get to give back to them tasks that we would like for them to fight and work hard for our city of Lansing to improve. And as far as budget goes, absolutely. You heard Gene Kirby's comments, working really, really hard with the state to offset that funding, to bring in another group of housing, affordable housing, that we're looking at. Today's average housing is 400-plus thousand dollars. Who's going to be paying all that? That's, that's not our community, right? So that work with our state is, is, is critical to include our sewage work, right? We're doing a lot of sewage pipe replacements. You guys have been seeing that. Tim Vandal and the city administrator have been leading a big project with doing a lot of sewage improvements in our city. And that's state offset, right? As well as the roads and the bridges that we've repaired, a lot of that is state offset in what we're fighting to do. So I, I, I think I may have answered your, your question, Pete, but like I said, there's, there's a lot more work to be done. But we are in constant dialogue with those state elected officials to help the city of Lansing, right down to network, 5G and network, right, that's been added to Lansing, that we fought forever to get here. And we got a company here, and all of a sudden, another company decides, since they weren't coming, now they're coming. So now we've got two 5G networks in here. So we worked really, really hard with the state to help us with that as well. I'm running out of time. I could talk to you forever about it. It's kind of exciting. I think you can tell in the passion, I'm excited about what Lansing's doing. Thanks.
Can I just say ditto? No, we're working hard. I can tell you that projects, for instance, like bridges, you know, the state gives grants for bridge replacement, you know, and we got some old bridges in this town, and we work with Tim Vandal, our city administrator, and he talks to our state reps, our state senators, to try to push those things in the Topeka capital. You know, sometimes we win, sometimes we lose. You know, we were working on the bridge over here on De Soto, trying to get a grant for it recently, to get that, that old bridge replaced. And unfortunately, our, we came up short with that one. Someone else got that, those funds. And, but we'll go back. We'll keep pushing, keep going back again and again, until they say yes. But every time that, that we come up with a project that we can see state funding out there, that we can draw into this community, that again, takes the tax burden off the residents, we try to do that. And Tim will let us know, okay, this is the project. Okay, this is what we need. The state has this funding available. So when you see a rep out there, or you email them, let them know that we're watching. We want that funding. We, we want to help with this. So we're all over it. We try to draw in as much money from the state as we can, trust me. But sometimes it's hard to pry that money out of their hands.
So I think probably the, one of the best ways to get a politician to do anything is through persistence. Currently, I'm, I'm pretty involved in some of the local political organizations. I've had quite a bit of contact with our elected local rep. Constantly putting a bug in these people's ears is the best way to get things done. Pester them until they, until they give in. If elected, as it stands now, I have a pretty decent relationship with the local leadership up there in Topeka. So I would constantly be bugging, letting them know what Lansing needs to be successful.
We do work with the city, or with the state. There are lots of projects, and Jesse mentioned the Eisenhower, crossing the, the intersection there in Eisenhower. We're in constant contact because the state prison is here. We talk to them when there's issues for funding with the prisons. We talk to, and Dave Bueller was just at one of our meetings, and we let them know what our concerns are. We did it with the, the ARPA funds that we received. We did it with the, the new housing that's going to be coming in, that new development. If, if there's state funds involved, we are always let our representatives know that we are interested, so that they can help channel those funds to us, where we can use them to help the city grow.
Mr. M., I think one of your specific questions was legislation and the money, how, how Lansing can tap into some of that state and federal funding. I personally have met with both Jeff Pittman and Pat Proctor. There are funding, funds available. It has, it has to be for projects that meet certain guidelines. And the, one of the projects that we've all talked about tonight is the biway, trying to connect Lansing, trying to not only bring businesses in, but if you have a good traffic way, you'll have people coming, wanting to live in Lansing, which will broaden our tax base and lower our, our property taxes. But there are money available. I, I've talked to both of the senate, and the senator, and a representative, and there is money available. We just need to figure out how we can best tap into it and make sure that we do it legally.
Thank you. Okay, gentlemen, for this next question, if you could take one minute, so that'd be five minutes, and then we'll have one minute each for wrap-up. We have 10 minutes left. Who's got the next question? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Jackie Kennedy. Recently, let us know if there are public transportation that doesn't go past the city. Is that, is public transportation something that doesn't go into the council, has on the radar, is that something that you've elaborated with?
Did you all hear that?
Yes.
Okay, please.
Jackie, in my opening comment, I mentioned that we, the city council needs to be focused on the needs of the people. And if the people were to bring that as a concern and a want, if, if I was elected, I would definitely want to encourage that we find a way to do that, make it happen. Everything is tied to dollars, but I, I don't think that that is something that we wouldn't be able to support. We just need to figure out the best way to do it.
Can I say ditto? Uh, yes, that is, public transportation is something that we have discussed briefly. It's been a while. One of the things that we talked about was the possibility of, of something from Lansing down to the Legends and back, because that's a lot of shopping down there. And, and, and we know that it's very difficult at times for some people to get into that way. It's been a few years since we've talked about that. And again, like Mr. Robinson said, if it gets brought up, if people start asking questions, it helps drive the council and helps prioritize some of the things that, that we can do and that we like to focus on. Thank you.
Yeah, that is an interesting question. Lansing is a pretty small community for a public transportation system. But with that said, like the gentleman just said, you know, if the money was there and the, the public wanted it, it would definitely be something that I would support, again, if the money's there. I mean, it would sort of tie into Ms. Workman's question about how do we get over to the, the library? How do we get to the pool? How do we get over to the new park? If public transportation was available, or some sort of a shuttle system maybe, even if it was just during the summer, when people want to use the pool, or kids are off school to get them around to the different, you know, Lansing amenities. Yeah, if the money was there, it might be something that could be done.
Yeah, that's a good question. I can tell you, by thinking about that question, I'm thinking shared transportation by two cities. One substantially bigger than the other. Who's going to carry most of that burden? Am I going to ask 50% of that burden to be put on my taxpayers in Lansing? No. 50% lower? No. We're not going to carry 50% of the burden when we're a quarter of the size. So it's got to be, again, a collaboration between two cities. So if they're three-fourths going to be using that transportation, and we're one-fourth going to be using that transportation, split it three-fourths and one-fourth. And that'd be, that'd be awesome to do something like that. But it has to be, again, a collaboration between two cities of different sizes. But you're right, we definitely need some public transportation in Lansing to help people get around. people get around.
All right, well, it's hard to top all these answers. So I've taken a note of it. It is something that we haven't addressed in a while now. Thank you, thank you for asking that question. It isn't something that we've addressed in a while, but it's not something that we can't go back and relook in our city council meetings and in our work sessions. That's a valid, valid point. There's creative ways to create that. Yeah, we'll bring, we'll bring it up to our city administrator and let him discuss it with love and work. And there could be some share, share rod, something like that. Yeah, it's a great idea. We do have, we do have senior citizens, we have retirees in here that want to get around, absolutely. Right down to medical and doctor visits as well. So there's something there, yeah. And that's the reason why we call it Lansing City with a Future, right? And that's the whole reason why I ran four years ago. So, thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you so much for making yourselves available this evening. Thank you for asking or answering the questions so candidly. And with that, let me give you each one minute to make your closing statement. Peter, would you please start off?
Well, I'd like to thank everyone for showing up tonight. I think this is very important. I encourage you to get your neighbors and your friends to get out and vote. It is kind of an off-election season, but it doesn't mean that it's any less important. I'd like to kind of just leave you with some things that I support. I believe people are first, they have to come first. I believe in fiscal responsibility. USD 469 did not raise our citizens' taxes this year. Industrial development, we've talked about that tonight. It's crucial that we get that. How we get there, we need to get a plan, and we need to have a strategic plan to make that happen. Town center development, we're on, we got a good start, but we have a ways to go. I want to help make that better. Housing growth for all income levels, super important that we get some housing that's available, affordable for people. We have teachers right now that work in our district that can't live here. Let's build some housing so they can do that. Again, I want to thank you for all being here, and have a great night.
I'd like to thank the chamber for hosting this, and I'd like to thank everybody for attending this evening. Unity is one thing that the city council has that you don't see in a lot of places. We don't always disagree on everything, but one thing that we do agree on is doing what's best for the city of Lansing. And that's what we do. We have our meetings, we have our discussions, sometimes we even have little arguments. But when it comes right down to it, at the very end, this council votes together. Because putting the city and putting the residents of Lansing first are the most important things in this city. Not politics, not our own personal goals, but the residents and the city of Lansing. My name's Greg Beeler, and I'd appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Again, yeah, thanks for the chamber for inviting us, and thanks for everybody for taking time out to come out to this forum. Pretty short and sweet. Like I mentioned in my opening, I put my name up to run for city council because I'm interested in getting involved in local government. One thing I think I would bring to the council, since I haven't been on it, is a fresh perspective. All these issues are kind of new to me, so I would definitely have a different perspective potentially than what some of the city and council members do. Not that their, not that their opinions are wrong, but mine would just possibly be different and maybe fresher. So whenever you go to the polls in November, please remember my name whenever you cast your vote.
Yeah, just like everybody else said, thank you to everybody for attending this evening, and thank you to the chamber for putting this event on. You know, sometimes when you do events like this, and you do multiple ones a week, it kind of seems redundant when you give the same speech again and again. But, you know, I look out in the audience, and I see faces that I haven't seen at other programs this week, so I thank you all for coming. We've got two months to an election, and I just got one thing to say. Just remember to vote for the most qualified person, I guess, the person who deserves it the most. Now, don't base it on party. This is a small-town election. We are here to look out for the residents of this community. We're not here to be a Democrat looking out for a Democrat, or a Republican looking out for a Republican. I'm looking out for every person in this community. And if elected to serve again, that's what I'll do. I'll look out for everybody's best interest, not just one person or one party. Thank you.
Well, I guess I'm the last one. And in closing, I'm the only one. War II, I'm running unopposed, unfortunately, unopposed, not by default. But hey, we've highlighted on the goals that I ran for four years ago, and we're still working, and we're still working together as a city council, and we've made some vast improvements. Commercial industry growth, it was brought up. Excellent question, and we're going to continue driving that. We're working really hard, especially with our city, our Lansing City Industrial Park. Our residential growth, we've talked to you about how our city administrator and our mayor is working hard with these builders, these contractors that could come in and help improve and grow residential growth. Want to continue to improve upon our roads and bridges, and we do. We have a lot of infrastructure on these roads and bridges and these tunnels that have to be replaced, these, you know, the sewage drives, you're seeing all of that going on. And then lastly, we're revenue neutral again. Revenue neutral again. Gene Kirby mentioned it, we are, and we're proud of it. The taxes will not go up. Vote, please go vote. Tell everyone to go vote. Your vote matters.
Ladies and gentlemen, would you express your appreciation? Okay, we're going to switch out and have the school board forum come up. While we're making transition, let me just announce, for anybody who's leaving, let me just announce that a week from today, next Wednesday at 5:30, we, the chamber, will be hosting a academic debate on the question, should the state of Kansas expand Medicaid? Right, Medicaid, yes. I keep confusing Medicaid and Medicare. But anyway, it's going to be a formal debate. We have four experts, one team of two coming in to debate for the proposal, and two to come in and formally debate against it. So I think you'll find it interesting, whatever your notions are, please come and join us a week from today at 5:30 at the Heritage Center. And finally, I want to express my appreciation not only to, again, my committee, Kelly Butler and Jeanette Labey, but also to Eric Price, who's managed the sound system and the live streaming for us. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming, and have a great, safe drive home.